Good evening. Welcome to the Tuesday, March 9th, 2021 School Committee Meeting. I call this meeting to order. With staff introductions to my left.
Natalie Barrows, student of the Saturday.
Robert Mullin.
Good evening, Mike Moran.
Good evening, Mark Branko, Assistant Superintendent.
Hi, Mike Flanagan, Superintendent.
Ryan McMahon.
Becky Stanton.
Julie Quasucci.
Anthony Tannenro.
Jeff Boe.
Joe Messina, Business Administrator.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
I will seek a motion to approve the February 28th, 2021 School Committee Meeting Minutes.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Discussion?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry 7-0-0. Correspondents, Dr. Branko?
Two pieces of correspondence to Mr. Chair. In your drive, you will have the copy of a guidance on in-person learning and student learning time requirements, hot off the presses, came out this afternoon from DESE, explaining that Commissioner Riley now has power granted to him by the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education to make amendments to the time on learning rules. And what that means is he is going to phase in school districts who are not in person over time and will be discounting any school districts that have kids who are not participating in person in full when it comes to accounting for their time on learning. So, the timeline right now is that all elementary schools K to 5 will be required to be back by April 5th with a full in-person adoption. Middle schools will phase in around April 28th. And right now, the high school dates will be announced in April. Best guess is late April, early May. So, it's in your drive if you want to take a look at it. Positive thing here is that we are really proud of the work we've done collectively as a community, as a board, and with the teachers' union to really work and put us in a place where we're actually ahead of the curve on this work. So, I really just want to share how proud we feel about Tingsboro being kind of ahead in doing all that work and that, you know, obviously, the commissioner's pushing all districts at this point in time. The second piece of correspondence is just to discuss the evolving MCAS schedule. At this time, Massachusetts has not applied for a waiver from the federal government to not give the MCAS. So, right now, there is a plan in place to roll out the high school ELA math and biology tests for 10th and 11th graders. If you recall, last year, our 10th graders didn't take the test. So, this year, the 11th and the 10th graders will take that. First week of May through the first week of June, they've widened the window because of kids coming in and out of school, you know, variety of models. Third through fifth grade, ELA math and science, technology, engineering, also similar window, May 10th through the 11th of June. And the middle school, believe it or not, is still TBD. They haven't figured out exactly what the schedule is for that. My best guess is they're waiting to see how many school districts across the state come back full in person before they roll out that next level of tests.
Thank you. Visitors, comments, and questions? I see none. Cheers to success.
Natalie?
At THS finals are taking place this week to close out trimester two. All the staff is extremely excited to welcome back students in person on Monday. All the students are eager to go to back to in-person learning as well as to begin their new trimester three classes. And the football and cheer teams have been practicing in preparation for their first scrimmage against North Middlesex this Saturday. Congratulations to the Students of the Month, Trevor Freelove, Emmy Heine, Zeta Lee, and Zach Souza. The Yearbook Committee has finalized the project and has sent it out to be printed. A special thanks to Katerina Panagakis and Tori Kozierik and also to our Yearbook Advisor, Mrs. Spear. Our prom date has been changed to Monday, June 7th, and the seniors are really looking forward to the plans for all of senior year activities. And a class fundraiser is underway. Please ask a senior if you would like to purchase some Nestle's cookie dough and snacks in support of the class of 2021. And later this week, the link will also be posted in the Tingsboro Hall Facebook group. At TMS, they are very excited to get many of the students back in school on Monday. Preparation for in-person learning is well underway as they continue to rearrange their big spaces to adhere to the criteria. And their classrooms will meet the criteria of six feet by four feet. Mr. Pollitt would also like to give a big shout out to Mr. Seventele and his staff for acquiring 200 tablet desks from other school districts at no cost other than the travel. Also, to the custodians and the maintenance staff at TMS because they couldn't do it without them. And their teachers have been handling the changes with patience and are still creating engaging lessons in their concurrent model. And all in all, TMS is moving along very well. And at TES, the 2020 to 2021 preschool registration opens Monday, March 29th. The required registration documents can be found on their website. Last week, kindergarten to grade two students transitioned to full in-person learning. The students are thrilled to be back. And Mrs. Kavanaugh would like to add that the staff has done a remarkable job preparing for their return. And the teachers have reestablished classroom routines and expectations while emphasizing the importance of the mitigation strategies, including mask wearing, hand washing, and sanitizing, and social distancing. Approximately 40K through grade two students who are remote transition to their new teacher. And their remote teachers have picked up where their previous teachers have left off with the curriculum that they are working to build relationships with the students and families. Students in grades three and four will also have a dedicated remote teacher assigned beginning Monday, March 15th. And this transition has begun this week. And given the low enrollment in grade five, current teachers will continue to provide synchronous instruction. TES is thrilled to welcome their upper elementary students back to in-full in-person learning on Monday, March 15th. Thank you.
Thank you, Natalie. There's no subcommittee update at this time. Personnel, we have a notification of intent to retire. Deb Teal, THS teacher, 21-plus years of service. Thank you for your service, Deb, and good luck in retirement. Notification of new hires, Jack Buckley, TMS grade seven science teacher. Catherine Cooney, TES grade three remote teacher. Carrie Nadal, TES grade four teacher. And Allison Tompkins, TMS grade seven English Language Arts teacher. Over from the board.
Unfinished business, TES reopening update. Dr. Flanagan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We'll go right to our reopening update. So, our first slide is our statistics for current active COVID cases. You can see we're in great shape right here. We have one active case in the district as we speak, and that was updated this afternoon at 1:30. So, we're in great shape there. We'll go to the next slide. You can see the positivity rate for the town, excuse me, ticked up a little bit. So, we have our eye on that. We're hoping, again, we're confident, again, that we'll be in the yellow this week as well, but we are watching these numbers closely. But again, I think if we have the larger conversation, which we've known over six months, is community transmission rate is very different than our in-school transmission rate. So, I don't think, you know, we're in a position right now, we're going to knee-jerk reaction to anything. We know that our numbers, we just saw the slide before, we have one active case in our school right now. So, I think if we've learned nothing else over six months, it's that those two numbers don't necessarily align. So, we'll go to the next slide. Just TES reopening update. Actually, Natalie just stole all my thunder. She read all these points. So, I really don't have much to say, but I will talk about, I'll highlight a couple things. One, I think it's gone very well, very smoothly at the elementary school reopening this past week. First and foremost, I think the most obvious thing that you can see is there's certainly a lot more traffic there in the morning and the afternoon. And I want to thank the Tingsboro Police Department for their support in making that as smooth as possible over there. It's great to see the kids back. It's great to see the teachers excited to have them back. We're really looking forward to next Monday when we bring more kids back. The transition for the remote learners went very well two weeks ago for the lower elementary. This week, it's happening for grades three and four so that it can be seamless on Monday for them. So, we're excited about it. I think we ask parents to please, I think, week one drop-off and pickup is very different than week two. So, we're hopeful that parents are starting to get in the routine and go from there. I know that both Becky and Jeff did a tour today. I don't know if you have anything to add about what you may have seen today.
Yeah, so, just in a little more detail and through a different lens, I just wanted to share what we had the opportunity to see. We got to see the entire elementary school, and I was just making some notes here about some of the things that I wanted the community to hear about in the school committee. So, one of the areas that we specifically stopped and watched, and I'm sure it was a little nerve-wracking for this teacher, is one of the remote classrooms. And when I say a remote classroom, it was actually a full classroom set up as a classroom. The teacher was teaching. They're remote students. She was very animated, and we were actually there for one of their, like, exercise breaks where she had them up and moving. It was fantastic. These remote teachers are set up really well to provide the necessary attention to their remote learners, and they had only remote learners. I'm not sure what grade it was that we saw, but it was really great to see. It was grade one.
I think so.
Yeah, it was, it was just a really fantastic setup. We also saw in the kindergarten hallway, we just happened to walk through at the time, that one of the classrooms was having a snack break. And I know there's been a lot of talk about mask breaks and snack breaks and how do they work? And until you see it, it's, you can only imagine it. So, the students were at their desks. The desks were very well spaced. And, you know, I didn't go in the classroom because we don't want to add extra people in there, but the desk looked very well spaced. The students did great. They stayed at their seat. You could tell that they were still engaged and having a good time, having their snack, no mask, and then they put them back on themselves. I know this sounds like silly to say this, but it wasn't this big to do. I think we make a bigger to-do about it than the students do. They just put them back on when they're done. We had the opportunity to go into a grade five classroom when the students weren't there. They were at gym, I believe, and see the spacing of the desks. All the desks are really well spaced, and in most of the classrooms, there's taping on the floor. So, when you knock the desk with your hip or whatever have you, the students know to kind of scoot that desk back to where it's supposed to be. They understand their designated spacing, and it was really refreshing to see. And then, we also got to see the gym set up and the cafeteria set up for movement breaks, for meal breaks that are for classrooms where they can't maintain the six-by-six spacing. And the staff at TES had just done an incredible job getting our kids back. On a personal note, I've had the opportunity to do the drop-off at TES four times. Monday went well, the first day, but it was a little hectic. But really, by Tuesday, that line was moving quick. And this past week, the line has, or this current week, the line has been moving quick. And thanks to the Tingsboro Police Department for helping move that along and for the parents for following the messaging from Mrs. Kavanaugh. I do encourage families to please read the messaging coming from the, all of the schools. That will help keep things moving along. That was, the one question I, one of the questions I had for Mrs. Kavanaugh was, you know, if you wanted me to share something with the school committee or with the town, what would it be? And she said, make sure they read my message. It's important that they read those messages. And if they have questions, call us. So, if there's any questions on drop-off or how the elementary school is working, just reach out to them. They want to answer your questions so you're comfortable with it. Sorry, I kind of went on. Jeff, I don't know if you have anything to add.
You pretty much covered in every one of my notes on here. But really, it was really great to see it. And if there were questions or concerns that we had, I know, you know, some of the, some of the things that I kind of had in the back of my mind, like, how does a snack break work? How are the students doing with their masks? How are they, you know, making their way through the hallways? Because I can imagine having to teach and then having to be called the mass police, it would really not go well. But the teachers aren't having to do that. The students were really, really good about doing what they needed to do at all the grade levels that we saw. You know, then to the point you had made about the fifth grade classroom that we got to look into, I think there were probably about 20 desks in there, but the room is so big, it didn't even feel like it was a full classroom. So, that was actually pretty interesting to see that as well. Other things I had up for my notes, too, is that the tent is going back up next week. So, as the students are able to get outside a little bit more, we're going to start to see more of that as an opportunity as well, which is great. And then, from, to kind of tell a quick personal story, and that as far as, my youngest son is in second grade, and so he's just going back into the full five days a week. And he was, when he first found out we were going back, he was terrified, tears, everything, didn't want anything to do with it. And when I thought back to it, he did part-time kindergarten. His first grade year got clipped in half, and then second grade has been remote up to this point, or hybrid up to this point. So, he never had a full school year. And so, there's probably a lot of students that were like him that may not have been very excited because it was a really brand-new thing. But after his first full week, it was really, it was the first couple of days of the first full week, he was happy to be back. He was catching up with friends that he hasn't seen since the middle of first grade. You know, he was able to see his teacher in person. He was just happy to be back. And now, he's at the point where he's kind of rubbing it in his brother's faces. He's back and they're not. So, just seeing that change, I think, was great. And I'm hoping that other parents that may have had kids that were reluctant are seeing something similar. It just, it was really a nice thing to see and then seeing how the students just are excited to be back in general. You could feel the energy in the classrooms.
So, in terms of reopening, I guess, thank you for those comments. I appreciate it. I think, I think that pretty much does it. We can go to the next slide, Mark. The last point I'll make about reopening before we go to budget development is, you know, next week, it's going to be different here on North Road. We have grades three to 12 coming back. It's going to be different at the elementary as well. Upper elementary's coming back. But here, what I'm thinking about is the drop-off and pickup. We ask parents to please, you know, bear with us, provide us some flexibility, and give us a couple of days and we'll figure it out. And it'll be, it'll be smooth. We can do this very well. So, that being said, we're going to talk a little bit 30,000-foot view about our FY22 budget development. And at this time, I'm going to have Mr. Messina take us from here.
Thank you, Dr. Flanagan. So, as always with your budget, we try to take it from a 30,000-foot level and just bring it down, land the plane as we get towards the end of the budget cycle. Budget development starts with headcount and salaries. So, your final budget for FY21 had 246.2 full-time equivalents, or people, for a total salary budget of $17,865,980. Currently, we have 242, my screen just went blind. 242.6 FTEs, a little bit over $17.7 million. And the difference in that was as we began to open the year realizing that some of our revenue accounts were probably going to be affected by the pandemic, there were some positions that were vacated either through retirement or resignation that we did not fill. So, we had a lower staff projected into, currently, and then brought forward into next year. It's $18,272,727. So, that's an increase from this year's salary budget of a little over $400,000 or a 2.2% increase. So, besides staffing, we've currently looked at some of the other line items. We have a outside company, INVO, that does some speech and language for us. Based upon the needs of the schools, we're looking to increase that 0.2, about $22,000. Dr. Branko's also been working with Merrimack College regarding some fellows to come in and do some coverages for us. And, Mark, I don't know if you want to give us a quick, what that looks like and how it projects out cost-wise?
So, Dr. Flanagan made this connection. It's a great, and so you can take over at any point around. It's a great, it's a, it's a great opportunity for us. So, they have a four-year program, and then the kids can move on into a graduate program at Merrimack if they so choose to pursue a graduate degree in education. And what this school is doing, which is fantastic, is they're giving them one full year of immersion into a position. And so, they're looking for districts to partner with them. We pay a nominal cost to the, to the university, to the college, and the college sends us a full-time fellow. It's part of their graduate work. We place them in special ed positions, ELL positions, general education classrooms. They work under a mentor teacher in our school district for an entire school year. Gets us some, some young, trained professional work, workers in the rank and file. Gets them unbelievable work-life experience. And we make this connection between the university and the district. And ultimately, the hope is to create this through line between Merrimack and Tingsboro Public Schools so that we have these slots over time to help them out and help us out at the same time.
No, I think it's, I think one thing to note is that it's a highly competitive program at Merrimack College. So, we're actually seeing some of their best candidates that were coming out with our teaching licenses, working for us. So, it's a, it's a great partnership that we're, we're part of. I sit on a advisory committee with Merrimack College that kind of introduced us to this program. So, we're really excited about it. It's a great opportunity for the district. So, so that's what the EL fellow is here that we're talking about.
So, that, so Dr. Branko and Dr. Flanagan have identified five positions that we can have fellows in. For those two figures, $19,000 for EL and $76,000 for four fellows for regular and special education. Then we looked at some of the other expense lines that we know have a tendency to be a little volatile. The first three are surrounding technology. And when you live in a remote world, like we've been doing this year, you find out some of the weaknesses. BYOD doesn't necessarily work. It opens up our system to some threats. So, Mr. Piper is talking about working more towards a true one-to-one device program where the kiddos are using our computers rather than their own. So, he's looking to increase his computer hardware replacement by $20,000. And internet firewall, certainly what we've worked through on this campus, recognize some of our deficiencies in our network and firewall. We're looking to increase your budget by some $34,000 to address that. Our student management system, Power School, this is a line item that hasn't been increased over the past couple of years. And Power School has continuously risen their costs. So, this is basically where catching up to where we should be on this line item. Last two, again, two of your bigger and most volatile, certainly out-of-districts most volatile. Mrs. Lewinsek, myself, have been looking closely at our out-of-district population, both current and future needs that might arise. And that line currently sits at about $189,000 increase. And the bus contract is scheduled for an increase next year, and that is another $71,000 for a total of these lines of $435,749. To Mark on the next slide, if you add that to your salary, we're currently looking at an initial increase of some $842,000 from this year's budget. Some line items we still have to look at include utilities, which I don't necessarily see that increasing too much. We're also continuing to work with the administrators regarding any additional staffing needs that the buildings may or may not need. And finally, the revenues will be the last thing to look at our revenues and see where our revenues stand. And ultimately, the balancing figure in from revenue to expenses is the school committee's budget request from the town. And I think that's it.
So, 30,000-foot view, you know, staffing, we need to see where we're going to land with student requests at the high school, where we're going to land with kids matriculating through grade a little, and other private schools coming over from the eighth grade, who's going to go to innovation from the elementary to the middle school. So, we need to see where the student numbers shake out. So, that's to be determined. As you know, tomorrow, I think the House is scheduled to vote on $1.9 trillion American Relief Plan. What impact that will have or what funding that will have for municipalities and schools, I don't know yet. I imagine we'll have that number or those, those projected revenues in the next couple of weeks. So, you know, I think the whole process has been delayed a little bit this year. I think, you know, our focus certainly has been on reopening schools. That's been our top goal. And now that we have, we're in a good spot there, now we can start to work on this budget. But I think, you know, it's indicative of what's going on at both the state and the federal level. More money's coming. I think we're starting to get a better picture of what schools are going to look like in the fall. I think if we had this conversation, we've had this conversation for three months, Joe, we have no idea what September's going to look like. We're starting to get a better idea of what September's going to look like. So, so all that being said, now is the appropriate time to develop a budget. It would have been a budget based on unknown information two or three months ago. So, this is actually a better process for us, better timeline for us. And again, it's early. So, we'll work the number, and we'll come to some over the next month or so. And that's all we have for budget.
Mr. Chair, if I may. Joe, the, the transportation line on the regular transportation 71,000, is that a normal increase?
So, it is, it isn't, and isn't. Your, your current contract, this will be option year two of a five-year contract that we entered in with the, had this been the end of a three-year contract and we were going out to bid? I would anticipate the number to be much higher.
Okay.
Generally, we'd lock in for three years and then sort of, sort of have to face the music at the end of the three years when we open the bid for the next three-year period. But we were in, this five-year gives us three years of a fixed, and then small increases for year four and year five. Looking, you know, jumping ahead to FY23, I know the bus company is hurting due to this pandemic, and I anticipate that we may be in for some sticker shock when we open the bid. I'll say bids, but, you know, I don't anticipate having bids. It'll probably be one bid when we go out to bid in the winter for FY23.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chair, I'll just keep plugging along if that's all right? 9A is academic calendar. Looking for preliminary quest, preliminary approval, excuse me, of the 21, 22 academic calendar. You will see that this calendar reflects a more traditional school calendar that we've approved in the past, much like the 1920 calendar. If you recall, this year, at the beginning of the year, we had nine, nine days that were, went immediately to the TTA to prepare for hybrid learning. That's all off the table. We're going back to starting teachers Monday before Labor Day, starting students the Tuesday before Labor Day, and getting into our regular schedule from there. So, looking for preliminary approval of this. I've already been in contact with the union to share this with them. They had no comments on it. They thought it looked fine. So, that's where we are.
Any thoughts on, on snow days and remote days?
So, interesting, I think we're going to have to, I think we're going to get some guidance from DESI on that. I think it's becoming an equity issue, and I think we're going to hear that we may not be able to do remote days next year. That was intended to be phased off this year and then the pandemic hit. So, so my guess is that it's untenable for the DESI to really get on board with that, given the fact that it really is an equity issue in districts across the state. Two years ago, some districts piloted it, and we, but it was made loud and clear that it was going away. So, stay tuned, I guess, is the best I could say. And it's too bad. And there might be a push in another direction, given the fact that a lot of districts have invested a significant amount of money into technology and remote learning, a Google Classroom, and we can all do this pretty well now for a day or two. That being said, we also balance that with, you know, the kids need to be kids and need to have the snow day. So, there's no good answer right now, and there's no good guidance on it right now. So, we'll leave it at that.
I will seek a motion to approve the 2021, 2022 academic calendar as presented.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries 7-0-0. 9B, 2021, 2022 school choice participation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you know, each year, we participate in the DESI's School Choice Program. It allows us to accept students from local Massachusetts community on a tuition-based process. We've been a part of school choice, Joe, as long as I can remember.
I can remember, too.
Yeah, so, we've been part of the school choice program forever. So, so this is just asking that you support us to continue in that program. We will come back to, probably two meetings out from now, with hard numbers of the number of seats that will open up in each school. As you recall, the past couple of years, we've not opened up seats at the elementary school, and part of the reason of that is because of all the new development in town and significant increase in registration at our elementary schools. So, it's a fine balance between accepting students and balancing with the fiscal reality as with, with the staffing pattern that you have. So, my, I anticipate that we won't be opening up seats at the elementary school again as more development keeps happening. So, so that being said, I will work with the building principals and come back to this committee with a full report on number of seats that will open up, K to 12.
Thank you. I will seek a motion to continue participation in the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education School Choice Program for the 2021, 2022 school year.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries 7-0-0. Finance, Mr. Messina.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For signing of bills, 15 bill warrants were presented to the committee tonight. I do have them all back signed. I do have them all back signed. In your drive is the list of warrant numbers, accounts, and amounts. For signing of payroll, since the last time we reviewed payroll, there were two payrolls, February 15th and March 1st. Again, warrant numbers, accounts, and amounts are in the drive. And that's it.
Thank you. School committee discussion. Natalie?
I'd just like to thank all of you and all the staff, all the hard work you've done in order for us to get back to in-person learning and I'm definitely excited to get back to it, if we as well as the county.
Ms. Mount?
First off, I would like to thank Ms. Deborah Teal for her 21 years of service. She's been a social studies teacher here at the high school. She started just before I started working here as a, as a substitute for several years and she was very helpful in guiding me, teaching me how to be a substitute. She was always, shut up, stupid phone, sorry. She was always very helpful to me in helping out, making me a better, a better teacher. So I wanted to thank her for her years of service and best of luck in, in retirement. The other thing, which of course I just lost here, the guidance plan that came out from the commissioner today, watching the news, they, the news stations, they seem to touch on the, on the, on the highlights only of making it sound like everyone is being forced back in immediately. If you read down to the fourth paragraph on the first page, however, the commissioner does state that importantly, families will retain the choice as to whether to send their children to school in person or have them learn remotely through the end of the school year. It's important that parents know that, that know that they are not being forced to send their children in full-time if they still have concerns, whether it's learning concerns or health concerns. Okay, I wanted them to be aware of that. Other than that, that's it.
Thank you.
Yes, so, so good evening and be aware that this coming weekend is daylight savings time and we spring forward that hour and our precious children lose that hour. So especially to the high school kids who are driving, you know, get that extra sleep because you're not going to be able to sleep in a couple of those days during the week. So hopefully you get the necessary rest and drive carefully next week. So it's going to be fun. I sometimes get a little tired, so if I lose an hour, I just leave them grumpy. So we know how the students can be, right? And again, thanks to the school admin, staff, and all those who worked hard to get our community back to school and I'm delighted that next week, high school then, then starts. Thanks to the Tingsboro Police Department, fantastic job as usual, as always. And then Ms. Teal, best wishes to you and I think there's a football game coming up next Friday night, maybe.
For us?
That's all I have. Thank you.
I'm good. Thank you. Jeff?
I'm all set. Thank you.
I'm all set. Thank you.
I'm good too.
I'm all set. Thank you.
I'd just like to thank all of the staff at our schools for making it possible for our students to go back. You could really see it in the elementary school today. It was just a totally different feeling than when Ryan and I walked through it back in September, I think it was. It was, it was a different school and thanks a lot to everybody for making this happen.
So Deb Teal, thank you so much for everything you've done for this community for the past 21 years. Wish you all the best in retirement. I absolutely deserve it. I think the best line of the night was hearing from Natalie saying that she was excited to get back to school. That's what it's about. That's what it's all about. You know, if our kids are happy, if we can keep them, take care of them and they're excited to come back to school, I think that makes everything we do and meeting on Sundays and doing other, that makes it all worthwhile. That's our goal. So Natalie, you made my night. Thanks.
Okay. We do have a need for executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body as declared by the chair. We will return from executive session only to adjourn the regular session meeting. This action requires a roll call vote.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
In favor?
In favor?
In favor?
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
You are in executive session. Have a good night, everybody.